ENT, pediatric and adult both. And maxillofacial and few jaw surgeries. Which usually in this country, dental people do that. Like maxillary and mandibular osteotomy and plating. So probably any procedure where airway is concerned. Uh there is a shared airway. So they they keep a fellow to train a person there. So so probably they they are very few institutes in the US. Who have these program in all the states out of fifty two. I guess there is only eight universities at teaching hospital has this program.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. What is the duration of this fellowship program or any fellowship program in USA?
One one year, one year. Usually in anesthesia, most of the programs have a one year. Few have two years, but they are sort of combined programs. Like they they combine ICU with one of the uh supra specialty of anesthesia like. Obstetric, regional acute pain, chronic pain, cardiothoracic, airway, neuro anesthesia. Uh uh these days uh emerging uh subspecialties also focus. White of care of ultrasound testing. So most of the fellowships are one year. Are you able to share it or no?
When within few minutes, you can start your talk and then it will be opening soon.
Yeah, I I need to look at the screen.
Just it's you see, I don't know. It's sixty eight percent loading in few few minutes it will open.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure, sure. Go ahead. Keep talking.
What is the time duration of cardiac anesthesia? And gynae anesthesia, gynae obst anesthesia and pain management? What is the duration? Same one year?
Yes, one year, yes.
Okay, and and combined, you said it's two years.
Some programs have it. But if we talk about most of them in anesthesia, it's one year. Because one year is enough if you dedicate yourself in certain, you know, supra specialty programs. One year is more than enough because here in the US, people work a lot. Like we come in for work like very early morning, five thirty or six AM.
Sorry, Binan.
So it's a back to back. So you got a lot of work, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. I think finally we are over open to.
Finally, you got it.
I apologize everybody for the delay. Yes, please.
No problem. So you you can look look the screen, right? So probably the biggest difficulty among the healthcare providers. Uh in exam is to talk and is to oh calm down your nerves and keep yourself organized. So probably I I tagged this long case discussion as that how to swallow the fish bone which is which is stuck in your throat. So probably we gonna work on it today. A little bit about me, my name is Bilal. Uh I was graduated in Pundya Medical College, Faisalabad, Pakistan. And then I was trained in anesthesiology. Uh initial few months with Colin Associates, uh Lahore and then Shauk Khanam. Lahore, most of my training was in Shauk Khanam, like three years and few months. And after that, I spent a time working as an assistant consultant in Middle East Riyadh. For four and half years and that's the most struggling part in my life. Because I was doing a full-time job and I was reading again from scratch, like all USMLEs. And then I was trying to get into the system. So now I am about to be graduated in my current fellowship program, which is advanced airway and ORL anesthesiology. Here at the Montefiore Medical Center, which has a teaching uh medical school also. Called Albert Einstein College of Medicine here in the Bronx, which is one of the five borough in the New York. Uh next screen please. So before I start this talk, I want to disclose that for this session, I don't have any financial interest or benefits. It's purely uh my interest to teach people or to tell them, which I think that I. Know in little bit better way, but maybe few people are there who even know better than me. So next please. Okay, so probably when we sit in exam or when the exam medium starts. So these are few things that you have to calm down yourself. Try to take a deep breath and train yourself how you're going to control your nerves. Okay, and you have to convince yourself that you need a little bit about everything. Because you know in exam, when the examiner asks a question. So it's a human nature, we get depressed, we lose our nerves. And second thing is that we try to respond immediately, which is wrong actually. Naturally, when somebody asks you any question, either it is academic or non-academic. Your brain tries to, you know, run a check system in your memory. And then your brain tried to organize whole data. But when we try to respond to examiner immediately. Our brain is still processing the information and we just interrupt our neurons. And we just take that tail end where we cut the processing system of the brain and we start talking, which is wrong. So always take like half a minute, thirty to forty five seconds. Understand the question and then let your brain to process everything and then organize your answer. That is the biggest key to be successful in the long case, especially even in the short case. You know, anesthesia is your business and you are trying to learn this business since last four or five years. And you are religiously practicing the same thing on every single day. So when the day of judgment comes, why you are afraid? Because you have not practiced how to calm down yourself, how to hold your nerve and how to organize your data. Okay, and the biggest enemy is your fear that your subconscious tells you, you haven't read this thing. It's been a while, you haven't revised it. But believe me, you know little bit of everything. You you have to believe in yourself. And in exam, you know, there are two things examiner going to look at you. Either examiner is trying to find out a very extraordinary candidate or other one. Other thing they are looking for that body to whom they can push into gray zone and. Tag you unsuccessful. So you are going to try that, they are going to push you in a gray zone and you have to pull. Out yourself out of that gray area. If you are successful during this whole drill, they cannot tag you unsuccessful. And I guarantee you that you will be successful. So can you move to next slide? Yeah, so look, let's say a question comes which you don't know. Look at this picture. It's it's maybe it's sounding very funny to few of the people. But when we we are asked something, we are not having much detail about that, we get blank. Let's say a question comes like this bottle. So you have to look at it, hold for couple of seconds. Let let your brain you start processing information and then start talking. Like I'm gonna stop for thirty second and then I I I'm going to tell you what my brains tell me about this picture. So now I will start. So thi- this is a plastic bottle with a like. Two fifty to three hundred ml of capacity with a black lid on, which can be open or closed. And you can fill this bottle with any liquor like juice, water, milk. And you can carry this bottle in your bag. And it's it it is made up of some recyclable material. So you can discard it or you can wash it again and you can reuse it multiple times. So so you know, you see that when we looked at this picture. It it just imagine that this is, this picture is just like a question that you haven't revised that or you don't know it. So let's go to another slide. So you know, I I think you you guys are little bit focused now. So let's say that I haven't read or revised the pharmacology since last two years. And I'm doing some private practice and somebody shows me this this uh ampule. So I'm gonna stop for a while and then you you hello. Can you please mute your mics please? Okay, okay. So a- 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 any one of you can take a pause of thirty second and have a courage to describe this ampule. Just organize yourself and say whatever you know about it. But take a deep breath, calm down your nerves and then organize your statement, your knowledge about this picture.
Yes, sir. I want to answer.
All right.
It is a sir, uh propofol uh ampule, it is of twenty ml and twenty two hundred milligram. It is used in anesthesia, general anesthesia to give anesthesia to patient. Uh to basically sedate the patient. And along with this, we use other ampule, other drugs to anesthesia. And it is quite painful and we add the uh diogren two percent length, two cc in ten ml. To avoid that pain and we give it slowly cardiac patient. So that it it causes rapid hypertension, it can cause rapid hypertension. And in during anesthesia awakening, we can also use it uh to defend the patient. And we can also use in Eva and it has many uses. And it is having, uh we we will not use it if patient is having hypersensitivity to this or any of these components. Or any uh components of it and it's all about the propofol.
Okay, stop, stop. So upside in your talk is that you have a courage, at least you spoke. But the same mistake you have made, you you haven't take your time. You didn't let your brain to organize all information and then you didn't organize your opening statement. So if I read it, I will say that this is an ampule, milky in color. It takes an IV induction agent called propofol. It comes as a twenty ml ampule, concentration is ten milligram per ml. Usually it is used for IV induction if there are no concerns regarding. Uh free cardio respiratory reserves in the patient. It can also be used as a total intravenous anesthesia. And for little bit sedation, it causes pain on injection. Which can be dealt with addition of some lignocaine. But again, few patients still feel pain. If even we add a lignocaine, I I'm just trying to organize your statements, okay? So is there anyone who 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 wanna try or should we move forward? I will appreciate that if someone tries. Copy my words.
So I can.
Okay.
Okay, so it is a uh white color ampule named propofol.
No, don't, don't, don't copy my words. Take your time. Let me finish next slide. I will get back to you. Just to organize. So probably, sorry. In long case, there are three parts, preoperative assessment, postoperative assessment. Sorry, preoperative assessment, intraoperative management and your postoperative plan. So examiner in a CPS format, they give you a patient and they they are talking to each other and observing you and. Ten amount of time period in which you talk to the patient and you grab all the information. And they let you to organize your whole retrieved information. And then they start talking to you about, they will say you tell about the patient, then they may. Patient conditions, patient optimizations, your plan of anesthesia, your whole conduct of anesthesia intraoperatively. And your post op plan. So again, you need to practice till your day of exam come that this is a template. If I guarantee you, if you follow these slides and you just. Use them as a checkpoint on every patient. And you just tell these basic things to your examiner plus like fifty percent knowledge in each topic. They you can never be pushed. Okay, so every patient we have a general concerns, their age, their sex, right? Patient is female, you should be be curious that last menstrual period and pregnancy test. Here in the. Won't let you push that patient in the operating room until unless they know about the status of. Her last menstrual period are negative or positive pregnancy test. I know that in Pakistan, this is not a routine practice, but this is one of the concerns. And what in when you look at the age, you have to make a habit that age is a pediatric. Or a younger middle aged or old patient. So if it's a pediatric, again, your concerns start changing like child is small, everything is small, right? You touch them, they get fried. You push anything on their skin, on their airway, they get swollen up. You have challenging airways, you have challenging IV lines, you have challenging inductions, okay? Because they have separation anxiety, they have stranger anxiety. Please mute your mics. Okay, if your patient is old, then again, the concerns change. Old patient, chronic medical conditions. They have not a proper capacity to handle the IV fluid overloads. They have, they are incapable to tolerate the electrolyte imbalances. They are incapable to tolerate pain, right? They they might have limited functional capacity. So at every step, your brain should start telling you, hey, hold on, you need to think. You need to review this information because examiner going to poke you or. Examiner going to catch you on the missed information. So every bullet in these slides is important. Then height, how tall the patient, because your height and weight tells you about your tube size, right? If patient BMI is high, then another story starts. How obese, is it morbidly obese, are super obese, are super super obese, are hyper obese? And you know, if your patient is obese and in a CPS, you you don't take the history of sleep apnea and few conditions. I'm not saying that you should be master of obesity and you should know all formulas like what is ideal body weight? What is real body weight? What is lean body weight? This this these are the points for extraordinary students. I'm not here to train you as an extraordinary student because we we have.
Let's see the screen please.
Sorry. Dr. Sishan, are you there?
You can continue, you can continue.
Okay, so high fat BMI and if BMI is high, you you need to train your brain that in history. You're going to investigate little bit about sleep apnea, metabolic syndrome, hypertension, diabetic, pre-diabetic. Baseline SPO two, if he or she sleeps on machine or not. A lot of candidates fail in the long case that they do everything and they just. Ignore that their patient was obese and they didn't inquire about it. Vital signs, it's a standard now, you have to take vitals, non-invasive blood pressure, heart rate. Saturation, saturation, not routinely we take in Pakistan, but let's say if your patient is asthmatic or COP. You have to have the baseline saturation, which is very important. An examiner is not going to spare you on this mistake. You are definitely in gray zone if you miss it. And the pain score also in good setup, you need to ask the pain score if your patient has acute abdomen, some trauma patient. You need to ask because the pain score going to tell you a lot. If patient in severe pain, maybe that patient needs a longer time for AMPO. Maybe your your induction plan gonna change from routine induction to rapid sequence or modified rapid sequence. Or you need to think about preemptive analgesia. So always document it, always try to ask about pain and better you. When you are going to start discussion with examiner, give him a heart an impression that you have. Establish a baseline pain score. And if somebody is pain, you 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 may have, you should have in your brain that you're gonna inquire about any. Uh allergies, extrabular in terms of OPI, non-OPI medications, okay? Then procedure, very simple, you you need to know the name of procedure and i- is it a lactive? A semi urgent, urgent or class emergency. Class emergency means that patient has to be opened in thirty minutes. And mostly it happens in the setting of limber life situation and functional state. Are you able to see the screen, everyone?
Is the screen visible?
Yes, yes.
All right, all right. So second, so in general concerns, functional. Metabolic equivalent task, so it can be. Like you you ask so many question, are you able to walk down few blocks in a street? Are you able to go up through two flight of stairs? Are you able to climb upstairs from one floor to third floor? You you dress up yourself, yeah. So while doing these activities, you ever you feel that you need to hold on for a while, chest pain, shortness of breath. Sorry, and in objective assessment, there are few tests like spirometry. The baseline echoes, CPAT, cardiopulmonary exercise testing. So in general concern, if your patient is fine, ASA one, you you just ask few question and go on. But if let's say your patient is have a history of heart failure. If recent MI last six months, morbidly obese, you're not gonna stop it here. You need to think right now so that you have this point in your mind. And when you are gonna plan your investigation, you need to add on there. So there there is a recent, not recent, it's a good tutorial, I put a reference there and you have time. It it functional status is a very important uh general concern. And examiner may initiate some discussion with you, so you you can go through it. It it's your choice. I just put a reference there. Can you see the reference?
I think reference is not visible. I think reference is not visible.
All right, so it's a tutorial of the week, you just go to the website and you can see the title, right? So you just type it, you will get it there.
Sorry, uh could you show your questionnaire uh that you're using in your work, please?
What questionnaire? The preoperative performer?
I think, yes, I think he's asking about the performer. Uh you can go finish.
Here, 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 everything is online. I don't have it with me. It's not a paper entry system here.
Okay, uh should I go to next slide?
Yes, please. Okay, so again, in general concerns, you you need to know that patient can speak the same language. If you have sometime, you get a patient from other region, they are first speaking this and that, so you you may need a translator. It has been happening with us at Shauk Khanam, but you know, it it's not a very important concern. And in general concern, you need to ask patient, any previous anesthetics? And especially post-operative nausea vomiting history or any bad history of anesthesia. Here in the West, people ask this question a lot because they are trying to inquire the malignant hypothermia. So if you want to op this them in your history, you can, but it's not a hard and fast that you have to do it. Then AMPO is also a general concern, you cannot miss it. Medication allergies, food products allergies and any events related to blood transfusions in the past. And if somebody have allergy, you need to ask what happened. Like if somebody is having penicillin allergy, you need to ask what happens to you. Even some patients say, oh, we got a stomach pain, it's not a hypersensitivity reaction. So if somebody really tells you, I get a lot of wheezes, rashes over the body, my throat chokes, my lips swell up. I I find myself having difficulty in breathing, that that's really a concerning and you need to avoid that medication. Okay, so you it it's an important one. Then addiction, smoking or any other thing like alcohol or some uh substance abuse. Like weed is very common everywhere, but this weed has nothing to do with anesthesia. But of of course cocaine or binge drinking is one of the concern. And always try to encourage your patient to stop smoking or to cut it down, okay? And the next one is that always ask the patient that for what surgery you are in. So it 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 gonna tell you that patient understanding about the OR setting and what what he or she gonna face. And and secondly, you can double check the side mark also. And any bloodborne diseases or communicable diseases, of course, it gonna affect your management. If somebody is have BC positive, HIV positive, you need to be extra cautious while touching the patient. Especially putting the lines in. So if there are other condition like VRE or somebody is having bed bound patient and some. Uh ID uh related precaution like you need to put on some aprons or some contact precautions. Or patient is COVID positive, you need to know and you need to tell your examiner also. And of course, it has its own precautions and modification in your uh management. We don't have time to discuss that. Next one. Sorry, next slide please. Okay, so now these are the general concern. You are going to apply these things on every patient, right? Either is it ASA one patient or is it ASA four patient, okay? Then it comes with the disease related concerns. Like let's say you you have a child planned for hernia repair. But mother says that he's coughing up since last couple of days and last night. He the child had a spike of high grade fever and uh he he started throwing up some flame of yellowish color. So again, it's URI, LRTI, so so you you need to stratify that 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 child is ready for a lactive case. Or if it's obstructive hernia, how you gonna uh you know, manage that patient and avoid the all concerns related to. So acute health conditions, you need to screen quickly. so acute health conditions, you need to screen quickly and then chronic medical conditions. And in chronic medical conditions, it's again natural when we see somebody heart failure, be standing down recently, hypertension, uncontrolled diabetes, COPD, on oxygen at night, we get depressed. No, you you need to know then every condition patient is having and you need to make a clear demarcation that if this is a chronic health condition is stable or unstable. If it's unstable, you are more worried. If it's stable, you are not worried. And let's say if it's unstable condition, then you have to keep in your brain that examiner may initiate a discussion that is this patient needs optimization or is this patient is optimized enough to go for surgery? We which have a lot of uh factors to take a final decision, but to screen quickly that health condition is chronic or sorry, that health can be chronic health condition is stable or unstable, you you need to do risk stratification. So if you do it in your practice, you you are not gonna forget in your exam also. So a clinical predictor wise, how you stratify, risk, it's a very easy table, it's on the next slide. You just need to cram it and you have to apply that table on all of your patient if they have a chronic health condition. Can you go to next slide? So this is the table, okay? So if your patient have a major risk predictor, the morbidity and mortality is more than five percent. More than five percent mean if you anesthetize under patient more than five, gonna have some morbidity morbidity and mortality. If it comes in the intermediate risk predictor, it's gonna be less than five. And if it's a minor, it's like one to two percent. So once you inquire your patient, okay, and then you apply his or her condition according to this table, it's gonna make you more settled down in terms of your confidence, your nerves and everything. So uh let's practice over here. Let's, we have a patient who has uncontrolled diabetes and he he has renal impairment and his vision is dim also and he had a CVA last in last uh two year ago and little bit weakness on the left side and he is on insulin. So how you are going to organize this all information in one or two sentence? Again, I'm saying calm down, cool down your nerves and if you want me to repeat, you can write it down and then take thirty seconds, organize it and present.
Can you repeat question sir?
Okay, sixty year old male, diabetic for last twenty years, retinopathy impaired renal functions, had a CVA two years ago with mild weakness on left side, bedside blood glucose level is two hundred, a glycated hemoglobin, like HB one AC is nine. Take thirty seconds organize your answer. And apply these health condition to these predictor wise, where he falls, is it a major, minor or intermediate risk?
So it's intermediate.
No, no. Okay. So are you guys ready for your answer? And that patient is on insulin, okay? Hello?
No, really thank you very well. Uh so uh you're telling it's uh intermediate or mediate uh level of the risk, yes?
Yeah, that's right. But you need to tell me whole information of this patient in your sentences, in one or two sentences, how you will present this patient?
Our patient was diabetic, as you told, twenty years back, having history of twenty years, uh history of diabetic.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on here. You you will say to your examiner as you told, I'm saying calm down, take a deep breath, organize yourself and then present. And I I'm having an impression that you are only a candidate in the class who is trying to participate. How about others?
Okay, sir, I have organized my answer.
You you have to organize yourself.
Hmm, yes, yes.
Your your body language, your sitting posture, your dress, how so everything should be organized if you don't want to be in grace on on the day of exam. It's not you, everybody, even if e- even myself also, if I'm gonna go for oral board exam, I have to organize everything.
Okay, sir, uh you told the scenario of twenty years uh history of.
No, no, omit this sentence. You you just tell me about patient, don't say you told it. I gave you information, you organize that info again. Your opening statement should not start with you.
Okay, so you asked about the patient uh coming in which category of the so your question was that, uh your uh patient is coming in which category of these three?
You cannot start from you. Try to find something else.
My answer for the question is we can see like this.
This is, this is, this is wrong statement. So I I will help you. The patient is diabetic since last sixty year on insulin therapy. Try to be.
Okay, patient is diabetic on uh since twenty years, uh having on insulin therapy and having history of CVA two years back, having weakness or left sided weakness. Uh these are three or four points are coming uh in the intermediate risk category predictors. So the patient is intermediate.
Hey, listen, listen, hold on, hold on buddy. This predictor, you have to tell your examiner when he or she will start an discussion with you or when you are going to tell him plan. You 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 are not supposed to talk right now.
Okay, sir.
You just need to do your homework before they start checking on you. Okay, so this patient is diabetic, last ten year or twenty years on insulin therapy, right?
Having uh on insulin therapy and having two years back, having CVA and one sided weakness and having retinopathy and having renal dysfunction. And his uh blood sugar uh at bedside is two hundred.
Okay, all right. Okay, anyone else? There are twenty three people in the room, I guess, twenty four. Are they sleeping?
Sir, I would, I would like to try, sir.
All right, go, go.
Uh sir, my patient, age sixty years, presented to pre-anesthesia clinic for assessment on detail after detail.
See, see, excuse me, you 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 should be very professional. Leave it anesthesia, there is no anesthesia clinic going on. You you need to tell about patient that this patient has blood sugar, whatever you say. If I will say, then then you guys will start chasing the same line. Okay. You have to tell about this, huh?
Okay, after detail uh history, uh uh my patient, my patient was, my patient had a diabetes, a longstanding diabetes for which he takes insulin, but his diabetes is not controlled as it is shown by his retinopathy and a CVA that happened two years ago. His HBA1C is also which shows that his uh diabetic has not been uh in proper control and he needs uh and he needs optimization prior to and he needs proper o- optimization.
No, who who asks you to tell about optimization?
Yeah, because HP A1C uh was the nine uh.
So you you already told that it's poorly controlled, that's it. It means that a glycated hemoglobin or capillary blood glucose gonna be very high.
Yeah.
You optimization, any further concerns, any you know, clearances, you you gonna discuss with the examiner, examiner before your plan? I'm telling you that you only long case is fifty percent is your knowledge and fifty percent how smart you are, how fluent you are, how good you are at your presentation. Like, I will say this patient is sixty year old, non-diabetic, sorry, this patient sixty year old, non-diabetic for last ten years, true diabetes as evident by his capillary blood glucose level of two hundred, glyca- time and on further medical inquiry, this patient has a micro and macrovascular complication in the form of retinopathy, nephropathy and cerebral vascular accident. How does it sound?
That's more organized.
Yes, you know, when you open up in front of examiner, that's the first and last chance that if people are sitting with a very relaxing posture, when you're gonna say something, they they're gonna sit up properly, uh huh, okay. You know, if you meet any horse rider, you know, when you sit on a horse, horse judge your capability with the power of your thighs. So then horse decide that he gonna listen to your command or he gonna just jump up to push you in air. The similar happens when you go in front of examiner and you start telling, they they are are very expert in that, they're gonna judge that how they're gonna behave to you and how you are going to perform. All right, so let's go to next slide. We will practice more. Next slide please. Okay, so then preoperative concerns, third section is that you you need to know little bit about the surgery, okay? What is type of surgery? Again, there is another table on based on that you can classify your procedure in the low risk, intermediate and high risk, okay? And you just need to screen your type of surgery according to that table, but you don't need to speak until you you're going to tell the plan to your examiner. And then you have to discuss with the surgeon that what are the uh you know, of course, there won't be any surgeon there, but you can tell your examiner during your plan that this is one of my concern that what will be the position of patient, what will be the sequence of event sometime you intubate the patient and they are gonna do laryngectomy and then you remove your tube and you give them another reinforced tube and they put in the uh that stoma they are creating. So you need to know the sequence. Sometime they start in a spine position and they prone the patient and then they flip it back. So you 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 have to have a plan in your mind, right? And then what will be the approach? Is it open or minimal invasive laparoscopic or robotic? I don't, I know that there nothing robotic going on in the Pakistan, but at least laparoscopic is almost everywhere and most of the residents have exposure to it. And thi- this is very vital, it's it's gonna guide you that how you are going to plan your analgesia, right? So it's always one step ahead and you have to be on top of everything. So you can never be master on this template in a single day, but if you practice it like a week or ten days in a group setting, keep talking and two people practice it and one is a monitor, you're gonna master it. So approach gonna tell you about your analgesics. If it's open surgery, right, patient is having very high pain score, but if it's a minimal invasive or laparoscopic, three or side port channel are there. So simple analgesics with little bit, you know, uh local infiltration or some tap block, blah, blah, blah. So it's gonna be fine. Then again, position, you need to know what will be the position, supine, prone, right, lateral. Because if patient is prone, there there are a lot of anesthesia related concerns and examiner may initiate discussion. So if you have to be prepared before time, uh you will be in a better position to calm down yourself, to organize yourself. Okay, then position like Trendelenburg, reverse Trendelenburg. But this position very important. If you do reverse to your patient, your intraoperative, your next step should be that you're gonna check the blood pressure immediately after a minute because whole venous return goes down and patient may develop hype. So you have to plan everything during your pre-procedure in medical inquiry. If you do a good pre-op, you're gonna perform better inside of one, in discussion with examiner and your patient gonna wake up in a better position. Any specific type of airway is needed? Let's say you are going to do thoracic surgery, of course, they may request you to put a DLT, right? If it's a so prone position, they may need a reinforced tube. If it's a tonsillectomy, adenoid adenoidectomy in a pediatric, they may need a uh radio, right? If a maxillofacial surgery, they may need a nasal tube. So if you know before, then you're gonna make arrangement for that. And surgery related, any other special equipment? Let's say if a long, long procedure and you are expecting a lot of pain, a lot of intracelular shapes, a risk of massive transfusion, uh they are gonna ask you hypotensive anesthesia, you feel that at certain point in your management, you need to run a drip of vasopressor. So you may try to think about the other lines like a arterial line, our central line, right? But you have to grab this information from this data and then you have to add this all stuff to your plan, which you are going to tell your examiner very soon, right? And other, any special equipment like A-line equipment, central line equipment, any infusion pump you need. I know in Pakistan, in certain center, they have infusion pump, but most of people have exposure of this A-line, central line and this all stuff. And point of care of testing, you are you planning to monitor blood sugar inside or it's it is also a POCD? Are you going to run a uh a couple of samples for blood gases? It happens. I'm not talking that you 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 are going to examiner that I'm going to do tag monitoring or auto monitoring, very fancy stuff. But POCD, anything you do at the bedside for the patient, it's a POCD, point of care of testing. So next slide. Okay, so this is a table which going to tell you that your surgery going to be high risk, intermediate risk or you know, uh minimal risk, right? So based on your clinical predictors and based on your surgery, you need to do stratification at your end. Obviously, if somebody needs a cardiac clearance, a pulmonary clearance or some neurology clearance, that is a separate business. But sometime in discussion examiner says you there is no cardiologist, what is your assessment? So at least you have to memorize one criteria so that you can tell him that based on AHA, this is AHA stratification. So I I have divided my this stratification in terms of clinical predictor based and procedure related. So based on procedure, XYZ patient is high risk, based on clinical predictor is some minimal risk. Let's say you have uncontrolled hypertension and patient is going to have a grotted and arteryectomy. So on the basis of procedure, your patient is high risk. But based on the clinical predictor, uncontrolled hypertension comes in the low risk patient, okay? Is it clear up till this point, uh, most of the people are sleeping at the back benches?
Cause you started with propofol, because you started with propofol, that's why they are sleeping now. I think I think they will wake up, don't worry.
No, we are not, we are listening to you because it's very new for us. So we are interesting in your speak. Uh, as you describe is your description because you describe it exactly how it should be and we just only follow you because it's only new subject for us.
It's not new subject, you know, in our countries, like in Asian countries, these are great country. I belong to Pakistan, I am very proud of that. I born there, I studied there, I was trained there. The issue is that we trained people on Desi style, but in exam, we ask them exactly what's going in, happening in UK. What's happening in Ireland, what's happening in US, which is wrong. Your attending job is to train you on these things. It's just the same like you, I I I was born in a Muslim family. So my parents told me there is a zan, you have to go for prayer five times a day, you have to read Quran at least once in your life. So that is my religion, even I haven't researched about religion, but I am just following blindly whatever they told me. So your mentors, your attendings need to train you for these four years. This is not a business which you which you gonna learn in ten days or ten weeks. You have been doing it over a certain number of years. So these things should be in your mind even you are sleeping. Alright, again, everybody slapped. Okay, next. Alright, can you go a little bit down? It's it's not whole page is showing up. No, 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 little bit up, little bit up. Now, now, why? Yes, so the first line is that you seek permission from the patient of physician. Can you move a screen little bit to keep it centralized? Now, other way, upside down. Now, a little bit down, okay, perfect. Again, you move. Alright, so whenever you're gonna start examination, you you you're gonna seek permission again, right? You're gonna tell the patient that I'm gonna examine you, so is it okay with you? Is there any painful area? You you make sure your hands, your stethoscope is warm enough and you start your examen, right? General physical examination, I never did, I but you you have to act like that you are doing it. And other systemic examination also, C V S, C N S, respiratory. Here in the US, even people don't listen to chest, even after intubation, they say it's useless. They they do ultrasound if they are concerned about chest expansion, this, that. But I'm not telling you guys that you 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 stop doing it. Whatever you have, whatever your local policy is there, whatever culture is there, you have to follow systemic examination. And you have to document any nerve deficit before in hand because especially if you you're gonna do reestrel and patient is already have some shatika, if has a limpy left leg. You you should document it rather they blame you that you did an injection in my back and now I am suffering, right? And this nerve damage is second most lawsuit cases after the tendon injuries. And then examination of area of interest that you you're planning to put A line or C V C, are you gonna do? And you didn't check the back and you find that there is a big, you know, healing ulcer on the back of the patient and you told your examiner you're gonna do spinal. And you know, needle is absent. Contraindication at the site of infection. You are planning to do A line on the right side and your examiner tells you, hey buddy, hold on, your patient has a A V systula on the right hand. So a quick review, next, see the wrist, pulpit, right? Arthritis, okay? That's it. It's a quick job, like thirty seconds. Next. Okay, airway examination, airway examination, very important. You have to, so Dr. Zishan, why you are showing half slides? What's wrong? What's wrong with you?
Sir, we can see the whole slide from here.
Okay, maybe he's confusing me. Okay, so in airway examination, you, it's a new thing, right? I'm not saying that you have to present your airway in the same way. So anatomically, we see like mouth opening, how's the potency of both nostrils? Uh, thyromental distance, neck movements, malum patti, right? We we and any teeth like capping, crowning, chipping, any dentures? If dentures are there, fixed, are removable, right? These are anatomical sector, right? But you 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 need to see your patient in terms of physiology. Let's say patient is having sepsis, right? And his cardio respiratory reserves are almost at the worst, you're gonna give some propofol and patient goes away, right? Maybe he's maintaining on hypercapnia and you're paralyzing him. Do you feel that that patient's heart gonna survive? Or his oxygen requirement gonna be maxed? Your patient is pregnant, uh, these results, your patient is B M I is seventy. So these, your pediatric patient with right sided lung collapse due to some foreign body. So these are physiological predictors of difficulty airway. So if you add this point to your presentation, it is gonna give heads up to your examiner again. He will say, okay, so this is a, you know, this topic was first time written in two thousand fifteen, at almost ten years back. But most of people are not aware of it, still people are talking a lot about it physiologically difficult airway. So recently, you see that reference that you are not able to see. Hello?
Really thank you, really thank you.
What?
I said, we are listening to you about the difficulty, uh, so it's, but how you can make examination? If it's, we will present it slightly in different direction. For example, if it will be like any difficulties to place inside something like tube like L M A.
I didn't get your question, can you repeat it?
No, because we are talking about difficulties, airway position. So how you can?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, you can say, based on my examination, this patient has a difficult airway in terms of anatomy and physiology. Because my findings include he has a high malum patti score of four, mouth opening, two fingers, borderline, thyromental distance, limited neck extension and top of everything. Physiologically, this patient is morbidly obese and already has a limited reserves.
Well, thanks for this answer.
Okay, so next slide. Okay, next slide please, Dr. Zishan. Now, investigations. Investigations, okay, so plan your investigation on all this medical inquiry. Routine investigation, of course, come for everyone and then you need to look that which patient needs E K G or some exercise testing or echo. If your patient is going, they need a little bit more investigations like C pat or some other spirometry or pulmonary function test. So based on your preoperative or like general concerns, your acute health condition, your chronic health condition, your surgery related concerns, okay, and your examination, guide you that what you are going to do. But always remember that, keep your habit, if your patient is diabetic, always ask your examiner. I would like to know about the capillary blood glucose level. Right now, if your patient is having a C O P D or bronchial asthma, always ask him that I would like to have a baseline saturation levels. And you you have to plan your other investigations as indicated based on your risk stratification, based on your medical inquiry, based on your examination, okay? And your history examination and investigation going to help you to formulate a safe plan for that patient. Next. Okay, so your plan can be general anesthesia, when you plan any anesthesia, you have to plan anesthesia. If it's extensive surgery and if some patient is going to have opened a major budget body cavity like abdominal cavity or thoracic cavity, neuraxial blocks like epidural or para vertigo blocks help a lot. Because pain is a very notorious factor for postoperative morbidity mortality. And if your patient has a well control in terms of pain management, the recovery is good. And morbidity mortality is relatively very low. And then your plan can be regional, so if you combine epidural, if you're gonna do a laparotomy or some liver section, it's gonna be open. So some people put the epidural before induction, then they give anesthesia and they use epidural as an analgesia or holy for anesthesia. That is a different discussion. So you have to have a clear plan in your mind. And second thing, when you are formulating your plan, you have to add one more stamp to your uh, you know, whole this activity that what to stop, what to continue in terms of your diabetic medication, your hypertens- antihypertensive medications. And these days, a lot of people are on this increasing pathway for these medication like Ozempic. So your N P O guideline also changes as per them, if somebody is on Ozempic, they should stop it one week before. Otherwise, they they are not properly N P O, okay? This is, initiate that discussion and then in your plan, you have to decide postoperative destination of your patient, either it's a daycare surgery or back to, or that patient goes to H D U or I C U. What I do for my patient, if somebody is at a risk of one organ is having heart failure or somebody is having end stage renal disease. So I, based on the availability, I will preferably consider him to go for H D U. But in, there are other factor also, type of surgery determines that and clinical condition determine that. And if somebody is at a risk of more than one organ dysfunction or failure, pre or postoperatively, you you have to have an I C U for that. And in your plan, the last term is premedication, premedication is a very broader term. It can be anxiolytic, just somebody is adult patient and very over cautious, you can use some midazolam or whatever. Uh, and in pediatrics, it's very important, right? Because pediatric population patient have a stranger anxiety, they have a separation anxiety when you separate them from the parents. They get disturbed when you take them to O R, very unfamiliar surroundings. So there are a lot of regimes, how they sedate patient. In some countries, they bring parents inside with the patient and they mask them down with the gas. Once patients leave, they request parent to go out, similar happens here in the US. And premedication can be aspiration pro flexes, very commonly being used in Pakistan, especially in ops patients. It can be preemptive anesthesia, like if somebody going to have a bariatric surgery and you you are not planning to give a lot of O P I, you can give some gabapentin or oral paracetamol or acetaminophen before O R, so till you finish all drugs, occupy their concern, pain receptors or it can be P U N V pro flexes. If somebody comes to you, uh, comes under your care and you find that this patient has a very severe P U N V. In certain country, they put patches like scopolamine patch on the back of the ear. But again, it's not available in Pakistan, it's so it's not necessary that you have to have it. But you have to have it on your patient, but if you save all premedication, so be prepared that exam. Discussing these few things, next. Okay, so before you're gonna tell your final plan to the patient, to the examiner, you need to ask a question to you, hey, hey, hold on, is there any need that I'm gonna talk to someone else? Like, I need to talk to cardiologist, I need to talk to a pulmonologist. Because always it's some optimization, it's a multidisciplinary team approach. You need to tell your examiner that I need a cardiac consult, I need pulmonary consult, but it's not like it's who ask undue, unjustified consults, okay? And many time examiner says that, okay, good, you you asked for a cardiology clearance, but I'm I'm happy you asked that, but there is no cardiologist in your center. So they may check your basic understanding of dealing with cardiology patients, okay? So it it may initiate some other discussion, right? Because in long case, there are two people, one gonna listen about the patient and some one gonna discuss the different conditions, right? So, next.
I may ask one question, when you have, when you had preparation for your exam, what kind of video lecture do you use or did you use a long time?
He's my teacher, Dr. Zishan Hashmi, he's a good teacher, I I just kept listening on him and I developed myself under his guidance. I I never used any videos, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, then next is you you have to take consent of the patient. And when we discuss about consent, right? In Pakistan, there is no culture, the nurse writes that a patient admit that he or she is able to undergo any type of surgery, anesthesia and one night before they sign it, but examiner may initiate discussion about consent. So when you consent somebody, you need to tell them your plan and you need to tell them uh, about alternative options and side effects and risk and benefits, okay? And always, always, when you end your discussion, even your history taking, you need to tell your patient that my plan is general anesthesia. We will put an I V on your hand, we will take you inside O R, we will put bunch of monitors on you like blood pressure cuff, E K G, five stickers, two on the right, three on the left, pulse oximeter and through I V medication, we will put you sleep. Once you sleep, we're gonna put a tube in your throat to help you with breathing, to give you oxygen, some inhalational gases to maintain your anesthesia during your sleep. I'm gonna give you some I V fluids, some medications to control your pain, some medications to control your nausea, vomiting, prophylactically. Once you are done, I'm gonna wake you up and we will observe you in recovery or I C U or I C U for certain period of time. And I I think after that surgeon have a plan for you. So thi- this is a general, you know, explain, you you explain your patient in this way, okay? I will be little bit faster because I have booked a conference room here and people are staring at me while I'm holding them out. Let's go next. Let's go. Next. Okay, so how to set up an operating room? The this, these things are going to be in your opening statement about your plan of anesthesia. So there is a mnemonic MS made, M for machine check, S for suction, M for monitors. Every monitor, your blood pressure cuff, your EKG, your pulse oximeter. If you are planning to do A-line monitoring, your A-line equipment. If you're gonna plan the central line, you're central line equipment, okay? Then your airway, which laryngoscope you're gonna use? It's a videoscope or a direct laryngoscope or a fibrooptic, whatever. Which tube, if you're gonna size seven tube, there should be six point five and seven point five in the well in the hand. Because some people have narrowed airways, your airway, your nasal airway or oral airway, what what whatever gonna help you with bag mask, this, that, disposable syringe to inflate your cuff. Always check cuff before you 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 start. Your IV fluid, your drips, if you are gonna do another line after patient's leave, you have to have a dressing, tonic, cannula, this, that, okay? Drugs, your induction drugs and your emergency drug, emergency like glycoprolate, atropine, phenylephrine in the form of bolus, say Radrab, acetate, uh, if you are expecting, like say you are gonna do a chromocytoma. So you you have to have vasopressive drips, vasodilated drips during clamping and clamping phase. So your your whole preparation comes in this mnemonic MS made. Go on please. Next slide. So now you're gonna tell the plan examiner. It's very important, first and last chance to grab the examiner intention must be clear and sound. And it's a game changing event, okay? You can tell your examiner that based on my preoperative assessment, like history, examination, investigations. I, before anesthetizing this patient, I will make sure, what? You will make sure MS made, like suction and machine is ready. I have, uh, full MS made, you have to tell every point, machine. I will make sure machine check, suction check, monitors are ready, uh, airway equipment is ready, IV drugs, IV fluids are ready. And what is the last one? Drugs are ready and availability of trained assistants and senior help available. And if you say that your patient gonna go to HDU or ICU, you can tell your reason. Like if if you have a laparotomy patient and you expect that there is gonna be a lot of intracellular fluid shifts, there is a risk of bleeding, so you can add on that. As this patient has a chance, probability to have a lot of intracellular fluid shifts or there's a chance of massive transfusion or bleeding. I will preferably make sure that patient goes to ICU or HDU. So tha- that's your, you know, plan. You tell him the plan and then you go on. You got it? Agreed? Nobody speaks. Hello?
Yes, yeah, we agreed completely.
Okay, I think you are the only one who who is agreeing. Okay, so intraoperative, again, you check your patient, patient is same, uh, record number is same, date of birth or whatever, there are different local guidelines, then you attach monitors. You start IV, start IV mean you attach IV drip, you make sure it's running. Because sometime if IV is not running and then you are struggling to put somebody down, it's it's not easy, so make sure it's running well. And if you're gonna do some pre-induction regional technique, you have to sit up that patient, do you finish your epidural or whatever, right? And then induce that patient, right? Maintain, uh, secure the airway and always when you are planning to man- ma- ma- manage the airway, you must have at least two plans ready, A and B. If your intubation fail, what you will do, like direct laryngoscope fail, what you will do, videoscope or what? Whatever, this is a very detailed discussion and antibiotic prophylaxis. Next slide, Dr. Zishan. Okay, then your intraoperative management come that after patient's leave, if you're gonna put a regional line like A-line or central line or another line, that's important and pressure point, padding is important. Then to wide hypothermia, you can do warming device or cover the unnecessary areas, use hotlines. DVT prophylaxis in terms of pharmacological and non-pharmacological, you need to tell your examiner, whatever you do or not, you need to tell them and how you're gonna maintain your anesthesia. It's gonna be TVA, TCI or inhalational, in Pakistan it's mostly inhalational. And if you don't, if you never done TVA, TCI, don't say. Because don't give him that corner about which you are not well aware because that patient, your examiner is looking to corner you to one side, okay? Next, next slide please. Okay, then again in intraoperative management, you you need to, if your patient is catheterized, you have to document urine every hour. If your patient is under TVA, so you have to do some base monitoring, this, that. It happens here in the West, in Pakistan it's not available, you can omit it. Then plan of extubation, let's say if your patient is morbidly obese, very high BMI, even you are in attending, you have to have your other colleague to help you with in the OR. It's very important because it's very easy to put somebody morbidly obese, to put him down. Put him down means to put him asleep. But when they wake up, it's very hard because they they may move a lot, they may be slipping of IV, they may obstruct the airway. So always have a plan. So always make sure that what was your block, neuromuscular blocker? What is your reversal? And then extubation, is it some, let's say if somebody is having maxillophic and they they have white shirt, they are mouth, so you're they can't, you put a nasal tube in and surgeon has closed the mouth with the wires for couple of days. So i- it's gonna be tricky. You have to have somebody around to help you. Maybe you you are very skilled person. But again, once you're engaged with the patient, maybe you need some equipment, maybe you need to give some drug, this, that. So somebody should be around and then once you extubate, your transfer should be saved, whatever your patient going to some ambu- ambulatory unit or PACU or HDU or ICU, it's your responsibility for a safe transfer. And patient transfer is a different subject. We cannot talk about it. We are not allowed to talk about it right now because we don't have time. Next slide. Okay, and in post-op, again, you will attach monitoring. You have to have at least standard monitoring till your patient is fully recovered. And you have to have your routine orders, routine order means your IV fluid, what is rate of IV fluid, which IV fluid? What is your prophylactic drug for, uh, to wide amizes? What is your anesthesia plan? Any special order like you want to run IABG or you want to do a blood sugar level again? Are you want to repeat a CBC or you want to repeat lactulize? You you have to tell the, you know, your nurse or the resident or attending who is taking over. And your anesthesia, always write your regular anesthesia and breakthrough anesthesia. Let's say you put a patient epidural. So you can say that my regular anesthesia will be the epidural infusion at this, this much rate, like five to fifteen ml per hour, keeping a map of sixty-five. But just in case of acute pain crisis, you can give fentanyl bolus or morphine bolus, anelbolsim bolus, whatever your regime is, whatever your recipe is, how you have been cooking through all couple of years back during your training. And most important is detailed handover and documented. Reassure your pa- patient, if your patient little bit awake, you're gonna say, hey buddy, you did well. Everything went very well, nothing surprises, okay? And then you have to update the family that job is done, patient is in recovery, they may call you. Or you may be able to see your patient once they move him out of room and that's it. What is next slide? That's it. Thank you very much for tolerating me for like more than an hour and all the best.
Okay, so I will just thanks Bilal for your time. And Bilal, you know, actually unfortunately, there was another lecture by our respected teacher going on. So a number of people were just divided unfortunately, otherwise, uh, more people would be here. Uh, I espe- especially request, uh, thanks to our flip-flop. I don't know what's your name, if you want to speak, tell your name, I will be
My name is Eugene, my name is Eugene.
Okay, so you, okay, so actually, uh, the thing is that Bilal was very submissive to tell me that he's my, I'm his teacher. But actually Bilal is extraordinary, mashallah. Yes, he was very lucky to be in one of the best hospital in Pakistan, one of the best hospital in the world in Saudi Arabia. And now he's in the best hos- one of the best hospital in the world in the US. So he's on the right track and the best thing about Bilal is that he's among one of the few people who listened to my request to do USMLE. Unfortunately, I I couldn't convince myself, but I I was able to convince Bilal. So, uh, at the end of the day, Bilal is on, in a, in a perfect place where he can express himself. And, uh, the, as he, uh, he explained in detail about the long case, the only thing is that we just have to organize our thoughts in the long case. And, uh, the the basic difference between long case and table viwa is that in long case, you have to interact with the patient, get the information and then make, uh, like he, he explained in detail about how to make the risk factors, how to categorize the risk, risk is like you can say risk stratification, okay? And all the planning, everything like, it's like a computer in your mind that examiner will not tell you everything, okay? He's expecting you that you will be looking because anesthetist should have at least ten, fifteen eyes and ten, fifteen hands. And he's looking twenty-three sixty degree because he has to not only look at the things which are in front of him or her and he, but he also has to anticipate which he is, which are not visible at the moment. And the the good anesthetist will be, who will be looking behind the curtains, okay? So whole of the discussion which Bilal did was that we have to anticipate, okay? If we are not able to anticipate and how will we anticipate? Eyes cannot see, but mind does not know, okay? So so we just try to give you vision and, uh, hopefully Bilal will give us some more time for his valuable experience and, uh, inshallah, hope to see, listen more from him, okay? So I I am again thanking all of you to join us at this
May I ask one question for, uh, Dr. Bilal?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I would like to ask one question because you have very big knowledge and you have already big experience in United States, uh, when you're working and when you're teaching some people and you're taking some knowledge from some professor. And it possible just from the half, your description, how you work, what kind of type of the work can you doing? And what kind of experience you're feeling when you work in United States, if it possible, of course.
In United States, you know, it's very hard because it's a very, very aggressive system. And they expect a lot from you that you know, it's the way I told you, you won't find anyone here who will tell you. You know, let's say I'm doing a thyroidectomy and you know, attending comes in. He says, hey buddy, we need to put nim tube in after the little bit ramming and phenylephrine touch and I will see you at extubation. That's the whole plan he's going to tell you, okay? And whatever I say, you 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 might not understand that. He's saying that we will put neuromuscular monitoring tube, which is a special tube to monitor card function. And he's saying that routine induction after that, use ramming, fentanyl and phenylephrine infusion and I will see you at extubation. That's the only thing in work wise. He under, under, he expect everything that I will follow whole this regime. I will see patient, explain everything, put an IV. And here in US, if you are a resident, there is no technician, there is no porter. Everything you have to prepare, IV, monitors, e- they give you a little bit help. Let's say you need a transducer for A-line, they will come in. Otherwise, resident is doing everything on their own, even fellows. So i- it's very aggressive system, but they have a dedicated sessions for teaching. They have dedicated research lab if you are a researcher. But again, your baseline skills, knowledge and everything should be very, very extraordinary, otherwise system will crash you. You you are unable to survive for even a month.
Thank you very much.
Yes, but actually, I I like, because there are so many people
One question from Dr. Bilal.
Sir.
Yes.
Sir, you worked there Saudi Arabia after, for, for four and a half years after your
Yes.
When did you start preparing for your U S M L E during your
Well, I started, no, no. I I started reading two months earlier when I'm, when I was about to fly to Saudi Arabia.
Means you took four and a half years for preparation.
No, 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 not four and a half year, I finished my steps in twenty twenty-two, right? Uh, yes, twenty twenty-two, step three was done. And then it took me like, uh, almost two years. After step two, CKI started talking to people about job or some training. So it took me like one and a half year to get a job over here.
Okay, remember one thing, just by doing USMLE, the Donald Trump will not come to receive you on the airport, okay? You will have to work hard, but there is fair chance, okay? And for that, if you run away from the word USMLE and you don't want to work hard, then you cannot get achieve, okay? For achievers, you don't ask this question, you just have to do it. And not everyone's plan is valid for everyone, uh, like
Yes, sir, we, sir, we have to do
Just, just a second, let me finish, Pardeep. Everyone will have different capacity, capability, different circumstances, different work, work environment and schedule. Um, and another thing, different grabbing time or grabbing power, okay? So i- it cannot be generalized, you know yourself better than anyone else. Make make commitment that you have to do it and you shall have, you'll do, you will be able to do it. Yes, Bilal, what you were saying and then ask Bilal and then we will finish because we have, we have taken a lot of time.
I was saying anything, you know, when I was struggling to come over here from Saudi Arabia, the people who used to come and look for some information who were already working in the US, they they never said me that you you are able to come. Ninety percent people used to say you are old drag, it's very competitive here, though anesthesia is very competitive here. But I never listened to them. I used to respond to them that even if there is point one percent chance, I will try. You know, this year in our program, there were fourteen hundred applicants for, uh, uh, a residency interview and there are eighteen residence slots. So they, uh, shortlisted two twenty people out of that fourteen hundred and now sixteen will be left. Then most of them over here, some people are doing PhD, even in this year, two people are coming in our program who are editors of anal- analgyzianesthesia journals. One girl is coming from Germany who has done PhD in research, so it's very, very competitive.
Well, sir, can I ask question?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Sir, what did you say, graduation year? I want to know.
I was graduated in two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, okay, sir.
Okay, Pardeep, your questions are not, uh, like, uh, remember one thing, you will have to do USMLE. So you, if you want to do it, don't ask questions, let's start preparing for it.
Inshallah, inshallah, sir, inshallah, I will do it, inshallah.
Thanks a lot, all of you and thanks a lot, Bilal. Unfortunately, apologize for the delay which we had to start the discussion. Uh, inshallah, hope to catch Bilal like he, uh, like, like today's session in future, okay? Bye bye, salaam alaikum.